Hurry, hurry up. What should we do next?
Okay.
Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order and I would like to make a motion to go on the executive session. This has got some employment history.
I just want to give you a quick heads up on Martin.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Go ahead.
We're good?
Everyone, we, uh, you ready, Michael? Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, we went into executive session to discuss employment history and just came out. And so, uh, we're a little bit, running a little bit late, so, uh, sorry about that. Tonight, unfortunately, Nancy has set this meeting up. She's, uh, got called to a meeting unexpectedly. So she called this afternoon and, uh, you know, explained that, so sorry that she can't be here. But we do have people from the other side of the county, which is always exciting and appreciated. Uh, so first we have Public County Economic Development Board President Kathleen Ables. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. May I stand or?
Oh, you, absolutely, yes.
Kathleen, could you come, uh, stand over here so that the videographer can then track you?
Anywhere, they'll get that.
Yeah, anywhere over there is good.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Kathleen Ables. I wanted to say thank you to the board of trustees for inviting me here tonight. Um, I am almost a lifelong resident of Putnam County, having moved here when I was 11, so a really long time ago. And I've been living in the town of Southeast for about 40 years now. I'm thrilled to have this opportunity, um, to have an encore career. Um, I previously retired from NICEAG where I worked for a long period of time in a variety of different roles. Um, so I look at what I can bring to the table is forming relationships to align goals, to make sure we're all on the same page, east and west. We want to live, work, and play in Putnam County. Um, I'll be working very closely with Tracy Walsh, who you're about to meet. The, we're across the hallway. If I sneeze, she says, "God bless me," so that's a good thing, to have somebody there with your back. Um, when I look at Putnam County, we just have so much to offer. I mean, there definitely is a wow factor here. Uh, we were able to just go live last week with the new website, which I invite you all to look at. Um, I think it captures the essence of Putnam, both east and west. And I think one of the things that we need to do is to leverage our existing assets. We have a highly educated workforce. We have almost no crime. We have access to excellent healthcare. Um, we have a wonderful public transportation system, and as you here know, because you have so many tourists coming up, taking a boat, taking a train, taking a trolley to come to Cold Spring and support businesses here. On the other side of the county, we also have, um, the Harlem Line of Metro North Railway. So we're very ripe for transit-oriented development. We have the intersection to Interstate 8. We have proximity to New York. We have proximity to airports. So all of things are good things that will help us to grow appropriately with appropriate businesses, supporting existing businesses, retaining employment opportunities within the county, because we all want to work closer to home. Um, and I think we have, um, a lot of opportunity here. Questions, comments?
Yeah, do you have our, what's on your plate right now, or your, uh, what are the first things you'll be working on?
Well, I started July 1st, so I've been, um, here for like two and a half months. And in my former position, um, with NICEAG, I was in public affairs towards the end of my career. So my first step was I wanted to reconnect with people I had existing relationships with, which largely were the elected officials. Now, never to you guys, because you're Central Hudson people. So the line kind of stopped at Stonecrop Nursery. That was the last, um, that was our last customer on the line. Um, but certainly reconnecting with people that I've had trusted relationships is very helpful. Um, I've also liked to look beyond our Putnam County borders, um, for good ideas and see how other people do things. So it's been helpful for me to, um, you know, attend various meetings. For example, Senator Gilderbrand sponsored a symposium a few weeks ago in Hyde Park about water and wastewater funding and how to get opportunities for federal monies, which I thought was fascinating. Um, you know, you just have to see the big picture, keep your eyes open, so there's a lot going on. I mean, I'm very much in favor. I previously served on the Town of Southeast Historic Site Commission for over 25 years. So I would very much like to see buildings repurposed with an eye towards historical preservation. Um, I serve on a couple of the boards on a volunteer basis, one of which is Town of Southeast Cultural Arts Coalition, also the Friends of Lajston Park. So I have a great interest in the quality of life for our residents. It's not all about, you know, money, money, money. Yeah, we want to expand the county's tax base. Uh, yeah, we want to have dollars to education and good things. But at the end of the day, it's about the quality of life here.
Can you, can you give us like a very brief explanation of what Economic Development Corporation does?
Yes.
What do you, what do you do?
Okay, well, our mission statement is to foster economic vitality in Putnam County. What that really boils down to is, um, we're a facilitator. We bring together businesses and resources, such as encouraging people to use CFA, um, process to get grants and funding. For example, the Empire State Development Corporation has a plethora of grants and opportunities that support the things like the craft beverage industry, innovation, working with education. Um, personally, I want to help to support infrastructure projects, because we need to have that. You know, we need to, before we get overwhelmed, as I understand Cold Spring is with tourists on weekends, you need to have an infrastructure place so that you can support that kind of activity, whether it's, you know, more public bathrooms, or whether it's a sewer system in Mayapack, or, you know, better transportation. So, you know, things like that are very important to me.
How often have you come to Cold Spring? How often do you visit Cold Spring per year, since you live in Putnam County your whole life?
Whenever I have friends or family from Europe, guess where I come? Right here. Like, this is America, right? I mean, you have your beautiful gazebo. You have the river. We'll have lunch at the Hudson House. We'll go for that nice one-mile walk. We'll stop at the Buddhist temple on the way that. I mean, just coming here tonight, I took the highway, because that's what Waze told me to do. But when I got off on 301, it was, you know, very much nice memories of doing these things. Going to Palton Pond when my kids were little, uh, you know, coming out here for a concert. Um, I think I have been almost every year to Basque Valley, the Shakespeare Festival, I was always the organizer. One year, we actually made the brochure. I was very excited about that, um, with our little fancy hors d'oeuvres setting up to, to tailgate. So my answer is probably not enough, right? If I'm having this, this array of memories, because it tells me I haven't been here enough. Um, I've enjoyed coming here in more recent years, uh, because when I met with my Central Hudson colleagues, you know, they work out of the Kipsey, I'm like, "Oh, let's meet in Cold Spring. You guys can take the train," right? So it's all good. I just think you have so much to offer here. And I, I know it, there is a disconnect, or a seeming disconnect between the east and the west side of the counties, but that's something that we need to work on.
How do you want to work on that?
Um, getting out here more, working with Tracy to promote Cold Spring without overwhelming what you can handle in terms of tourism, um, trying to attract appropriate businesses, um, and talking it up, right? Now, when I talk to people on the eastly side of the county, businesses are, all the sales tax revenue, it all comes from us. Well, not really, because as we were discussing prior to this meeting, I think most of Putnam County's sales tax revenue actually comes from the sales of cars, because even if you buy them in Denver, Connecticut, you're still putting that money back into the coffers. So I think we need to, you know, all take down the blinders and lighten ourselves of, you know, the whole package that Putnam County has to offer.
Kathleen, are there any projects that have been funded by the EDC in the Cold Spring area?
EDC does not have a quoffer of money. We are support, we are 501(c)(6). We are supported financially by Putnam County. And what we do is direct people to those possible pots of gold. We support projects that would be suitable.
I remember that I appeared before an EDC, uh, meeting in 2015 or 2016 on the Butterfield project. The Butterfield, um, proposal was, I can't remember how much money, and I believe it was approved by the EDC. So I'm surprised that wasn't mentioned, or that you didn't mention that.
Um, I, before taking this position, I had served on the board for EDC. And, um, I can't speak for my predecessor, but, you know, from all the board meetings I attended, the board directors, I don't remember that being expressly developed. Um, it certainly sounded like a good idea from everything that I read in the newspapers. But you would have to educate me on what's going on with that now.
Are you 100% funded by the county?
Not 100%, but very close.
Who else, who else, you know, where else did the money come from?
Memberships, which is one of the reasons for getting the new website up and running. The old website was very, you know, gray final suit. It wasn't dynamic. It wasn't current. Um, we got that to go live last week. We're going to continue adding to that. And one of the new tabs is going to be membership to try to get businesses commit to the EDC for funding. Um, another tab that I think is very important is to improve on the demographics. When I worked on the website, I kept getting into a frame of mind where I wanted to think, "Well, you know, if I lived in Germany or Japan and I was reading this, what's going to attract me to Putnam County?" Demographics are extremely important. How many people live here? What the education level is? You know, large companies, they look for talent. Um, the other aspect is, I learned from attending that federal meeting, that in order to qualify for some funding, they look not only at the size or population of a civil division, but they also look at household income. So getting current, accurate information, including for, you know, smaller business. What, what's the disposable income? And that's what my businesses would locate here.
What can you do for the village of Cold Spring?
I don't know yet. I'm hoping that you'll be able to educate me on that. Um, we met with, um, Tracy and I met with Eliza, um, this evening before this meeting to try to learn more. And that's the first step, I think, is to not jump in and tell other people how to run their towns and their villages, but to keep an open mind and to learn.
You mentioned that you, um, can help find funding for infrastructure. Do you have any sources for that?
Um, the best source is the Empire State Development, and they have a wonderful website. And you can point and click and drill down all day long. But in terms of, I can also share with you, um, you know, tomorrow, the day after, um, the presentation that I, um, saw up in Hyde Park a few weeks ago that talked about water and wastewater funding for federal.
We've done those continually year after year.
Good. That's terrific.
So basically, you're, it sounds like you, you're not really developing. You're more as a resource that shares?
Yep. Connecting people, connecting businesses, connecting other resources, um, trying to get people to, in this area, to get CFA funding. That's very significant. The Town of Southeast Cultural Arts that I serve on, they have two projects that have been put in with the CFA. We're optimistic that maybe we'll get one of them. We are trying to save an existing building, building in the village of Brewster, Old Town Hall and 67 Main Street. The top floor that has an exquisite auditorium, but like every other project, it takes money. So doing things like finding grant writers that are capable, that seems to be an important thing. Um, you know, helping people, guiding them through this labyrinth to try to get to some money on the other side.
Anything else from the board? Well, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming over.
Thank you very much.
Hope to see more of you.
You will. Thank you.
Next up, we have the new Tourism Director. How are you?
Hi, everybody. Um, so I do have a few notes. I'm, I'm Tracy Walsh. Um, I'm not a month in yet, and I am very happy to be here. Um, I've actually, so I am a lifelong resident of Putnam County. I, um, did leave to go to college. My parents told me I had to get out there a little bit, um, but wanted to come back and, and raise my family, my, my entire family. Uh, does live, you know, in, in Putnam. My mother won't have it any other way, so there I am. Um, this is also my second career, really my third. I was a schoolteacher for 17 years and, uh, worked for the American Cancer Society. I was a volunteer for 10 years, a staff partner. And I've come back to my volunteer role and, um, happy to be, happy to be doing this. Um, so in my last 15 days, this is not a volunteer. I, now I'm happy to be in this role, though. This is not a volunteer role. I'm going back to be a volunteer with the American Cancer Society, so I could jump into this. Um, so I'm about into my third week. And the most important thing, well, I've been out throughout the county, um, meeting people, getting to know people, uh, listening. I think this is, um, very, very important for this, for tourism right now, is to rebuild, reestablish relationships. That doesn't happen with one meeting. So it's going to be many meetings. Um, I come to Cold Spring all the time. And in the fast, uh, in the past week, before then, all the time too. But, um, you know, I know folks had some concerns that is this going to be throughout the county? How's this going to work? What's going to happen to us? And I feel that if I do my job right, which I intend to, everyone, the whole county will become more robust. You know, there, the county has so much to offer, um, with different personalities. So, you know, I've met with Eliza a few times already, and we, we spoke at length last week. And, um, it sounds like you guys need tourism management. Some people feel a little bit overrun over here when, when the boats come in or on the weekends, and they can't find a spot to park. Um, so in addition to promoting and making folks aware, you also need maybe help with trolleys and schedules and really organization, maybe some clearer, we've heard some clearer signs down by the train station, so that when folks get off, they know where to get the trolley or how to go to Magazino, so that there's not 500 people coming off a boat and doing a march up your main street, which, which is a great problem, but I think the word "problem" might still be in there. Um, but my job right now, I can't fix that for next week, because that, that's not telling the truth. But I certainly can listen as you go through it and work with you to, to better manage all the wonderful things you have going on. Um, so where have I been? What have I been doing? I, we had to reestablish the tourism department from scratch. We had to reapply for our New York State funding. We have received our funds back from the state. We are in the process of applying for our 2020 matching funds. We have been approved for part one of that process. And we are working closely with the county team and New York State to ensure that we remain in compliance moving forward. We're working on our new print ad campaign. We have three new fall ads that are, are ready to hit. You'll see us in Hudson Valley Magazine, program, um, different publications, uh, probably starting, you know, mid-October, November 1 issues, depending on when they come out. I, I laughingly said if I knew that starting September 3rd would put me right up on the deadlines of the, you know, yesterday. I mean, I'd have enjoyed the end of my summer, so I'm kind of glad I, I didn't know. Um, but right now, we're, we're really reintroducing all that Putnam has to offer to the folks outside of the county. So tourism, you know, we, we want, of course, we want folks in our county to know all that we have to offer, but we want to bring revenue from outside of the county into Putnam. Um, we've made some directional changes, um, about where to place ads. We're putting more of an emphasis on Grand Central, Manhattan. We, we were placing a lot of ads previously in, not to say that they don't come from Philadelphia, but in some magazines where we thought maybe we weren't spending money in the wisest way possible. So we're taking a good, hard look at how to be effective and efficient, but also exciting, right? Um, so we've done that. Um, we're creating a radio and digital media campaign also to increase our reach. But what that also does again is, when you create a digital campaign, it's very good at collecting data that we can then analyze as we move forward and look and make sure that our, our tourism dollars are being well spent. Um, so one example is, um, you know, you have Google, right? I, most people, everyone knows about Google. But we need to work to make sure that when you Google "Putnam County," right, our website comes up. We want to have "Google My Business." We want that to be the first thing that you say, so that it's right there, and then it says, "Go to your website." Speaking of websites, the old website was shut down. Um, that was a real educational experience for me, because you'd think, many, that that's just, "Okay, can you give me your username and password, and then we can just go along?" No, everything has to be created from scratch within the past month. So right now, we do have our new website up and running. Um, visit putnam.org. It, um, is in the process of being constructed, so all these things. And we are back up on Facebook. Um, we will go onto Instagram and Twitter. But my mother always told me, "If you're going to do something, do it well." So rather than spread ourselves and do sort of an okay job across all the platforms, we're trying to establish ourselves and really build, build as we go. So we're there, and I've been meeting, so here, we've met with folks. I, I've met with folks since I started on the third, in Kent for Arts on the Lake, the Carmel Kent Chamber, the Conservation Foundation, the Putnam Historian's Office, the Southeast Museum, the Cultural Arts Coalition Studio around the corner. I've been to Magazino twice, once because, um, I had a meeting there, and we met with the Metro North folks, and they really brought some great, great ideas on, um, not only increasing, you know, right there, they were working with the folks from Magazino, on increasing visitors. You know, I don't know if you guys know, but they're up to over 30, almost 32,000 visitors since they've opened. Um, but one of the things we were discussing is how we can, as I said before, help maybe direct folks there first to ease that crush that you might get on Main Street and to, to spread your visitors, visitors around. And, um, and just small things, you know, Vincent Tamani was there. We, we talked about the trolley and transportation and how that can be an effective tool. Um, and so this is just one, one example, is, you know, I don't know if locals ride the trolley, but it's not cashless yet. You have to have your dollars. But if you purchase through, at Grand Central, and you purchase a package, it would include possibly the trolley. So now, when you get off, you've got your ticket. You've, you can go to your, your venue. You can get on the trolley with the, with the barcode swipe, just kind of trying to keep everything really efficient. Um, so I also trekked through, which I will admit this, I did not know was there until a friend of mine told me. So Friday was like, I had the best job. Friday was great. It was beautiful. Went to Magazino. I went up to Saunders Farm. I walked all around. I took beautiful pictures. It's on the front page of our tourism website. It's on our Facebook page. You know, I.
Magazino.
Magazino and the farm, the sculptures.
Neither of which are in Cold Spring.
Well, yes, but they're close. I know they're in Garrison and Phillips Town. I understand that. But I ate here in between, because I was starving. So I was at the American Grill. I'm just telling you about, isn't that, right? That's Cold Spring.
Uh, you mean Willie's?
Well, the sign on that, that thing says, "American Grill." It also says, "AARP Fighters."
Sons of AARP. I'm a son of AARP.
Okay, so I was there, right?
That's Willie's.
They have great burgers. Um, no, I know they're not in Cold Spring, but I am on the, tomorrow I'm having lunch at Basque Valley. Meeting with them for two hours, so that does qualify, right? So then you're going to have to explain this to me.
Okay. Because I'm, see? I think we should leave that to the mayor.
I'm one of them, but this is, you're going to have to help me, because I'm here. Okay, how about Mumu's?
That is in the village.
I'm in Maple, okay, so. Okay, I must go back and forth over the imaginary line quite often, and I apologize. And I will be more careful, but I am on the west side of the county a lot. Um, and really, just, you know, we're going to come back for a chamber meeting. So the, the idea of this is not to, and I used to drive, and I will tell you, though this probably isn't even funny, but we, my father had a business in Bear Mountain. So every workday, he'd say, "No, we, we have to go on Division Street and take the cut through. We come back to Cold Spring when we're not working, but if we want to get to work, we really have to take the cut through." Um, no, it's just really to get to know folks and, and help you and to listen. You know, as, as, as Eliza and I were talking, can I stand up here and be really genuine and say, "Well, we'll, we'll solve," you know, you have this wonderful, some people, you know, this boat, the job's off folks, right? There are a couple of different opinions on, it's great for some, it's hard for others. Can I solve that problem by next week? No. But if I'm here and I'm listening and we work together, maybe we can come up with some answers for not only the visitors booth, right? We've got, we've got a lot of stuff going on. It's on tape, so maybe we shouldn't talk about the fact that, you know, there's even times, right, when toilet paper in the bathroom. But we, you guys, you know, you have, it's beautiful. Our, our county is beautiful from east to west. And I guess the, the message I can give you is proper development and promotion of the county on one side is never at the detriment of the other, if you're, if you're doing the job right. It's really about having everyone, everyone can't be happy all the time, but everyone should be more happy than unhappy most of the time.
So a couple of things. Um, one, one, I think one of the, uh, first of all, I'd love to set up a meeting with you. Um, and, and the reason, you know, just, uh, just to come down to the office, so if we can set that up, that'd be good. Um, because I, I think there's kind of a disconnect, well, there's definitely disconnects all over the village as far as, you know, trying to, the chamber and who the chamber represents in the main street. And, uh, that's always been split. They've never been able to get that together. And things happen with the chamber that sometimes we're not aware of, you know? And, and we, we're running the, if this administration's running, this board is running the village pretty much. And, and I think it's, uh, the first stop should really be us, you know, I really.
I don't have to say, not to, I'll let you finish. You are, you are my first board. You are the first, we've had some informal meetings. Um, you know, uh, Eliza came to the ledge meeting last week with Nancy. Nancy and I, you know, I was there. Um, but I, I don't disagree with you at all, and that's why I'm here today.
Great. And I'm glad, I'm glad you are here. And, uh, I, I just think that that's very important, because I know, like, when we were talking about the trolley and Vinnie came over and, you know, we sat and talked with him. And, uh, but conversations had happened before that. Stops were decided on, decisions were made, and we weren't aware of them. And it affects our traffic. It affects our police. And it was, things were not going to work the way they were outlined by the chamber. But yet, you know, that's what was going on. It was like, kind of, we were late. We're the second stop. So I definitely would appreciate, I, I think we should be the first stop. I think that, you know, our, our view on the village is, as a village as a whole, not just as a merchant, you know? Merchants are part of us. They're vital part of, you know, Main Street and, and what's going on here. And then there's all the residents that are affected by it also. So as you've mentioned before, it's how to manage all of that, which we're aware of and working on also. Um, so, you know, that's, that's the first thing. I'd love to meet with you whenever you're available. My schedule's kind of, uh, kind of loose. I can, I'm flexible and if you'd like to, of course, we can set something up. I'd love to, if you can. Um, the, the second thing is, um, you know, we haven't had a great relationship, you know, with the other side of the county as far as tourism goes, because from our viewpoint, we're inundated by tourists. And we've gotten the same amount of money from the county for, which isn't your department, but it's your link to it now, and you're part of.
Well, I'm actually glad that you said that out loud, right? Because I'm not the magic money lady.
Right. No, I know that, but now you, now that you are part of a department, I guess, of the, of the county, um, you know, you know, I think we have 7,500. It's what we've been given, and we've asked for more and haven't gotten that. Um, and this has been forever, and, uh, that's doubtful. Not saying we don't appreciate that. It's just that, you know, Breakneck, as I'm sure you're aware, um, is like one of the biggest tourist hiking places in the, in the country. And those thousands of people are going through our village, and that has an impact on us. And, uh, and then the amount of people coming up here, and especially in the fall with C Street and just tourists, and if you're on a weekend, um, we're pretty much, uh, overwhelmed, you know? We don't need any advertising in a way. Um, we're, we're known, and people are coming here. And, but it doesn't seem like we're, you know, being treated as we should, as a tourist, you know, attraction, as a tourist destination, you know? We're not receiving, we're receiving hardly any money. Um, and it's like, you know, so, you know, as far as having to put extra police on or whatever like that, that all has to do with tourism. Our infrastructure's being affected by tourism. So, um, that's one of the things that I'd love to talk to you about, how we can do that, um, among other things. But, uh, so those are the, I think, are my, those are my top.
And what I also hear is, it's a team effort. So you're the integral part of the team, and you want to be the decisions. I, I hear you.
Right. I mean, the chambers work really well and have a good relationship with them, and, and they've got better. Both Jack and Eliza are great, and before that, uh, you know, the president before that. Um, but, you know, they have to be in coordination with us and, and understand that, you know, if we're going to have stops and we're going to put a pamphlet out that says, "We're going to have a stop in front of the village hall on a weekend," that's not, you know, if that came to us, we would have said no right away. to us, we would've said no right away, but that's kind of, you know, luckily, I don't think there is a, you know, there isn't, the stops are infrequent or not always scheduled, you know, there's not a real schedule for them. So they're not stopping in front of the village hall, I don't believe. I followed them around, but I wouldn't want that because with the congestion on Main Street, you know, it's just, it's not a good thing. And there's a couple of other places that they were scheduled to try to park that just would not be good for the village. If they, you know, that should run through us first as a traffic control, because then our police are involved.
And you know that's transportation, but, right. So communicating is very important.
Absolutely.
That's what we're doing right now, listening.
Yes.
I also think, you know, the chamber represents more than just this little village. They tend to represent a wide area. So, you know, they see four hundred people coming in the boats, they wanna like, get them out of the village and get them to Magazino. These people have four hours here. You know, getting them to Magazino is gonna kill their four hours and it's not gonna make the merchants in town happy if we start pulling everybody out.
So my question.
So there's a fine line between.
This is good to listen to, because.
I would say, if you get a chance, talk to the local merchants. There's a fine line between, you know.
We don't wanna pull them out. We were under, and this is why I'm here, and this is why we're all here, the impression that the merchants felt also a little bit overrun with the, all of a sudden, everybody all together crush. So we're not really trying to get them out so they don't spend money here. We're trying to manage their experience and your and her experience, right? As people who live here.
People hear from the merchants that they make their winter based on October, November.
Correct.
And so if the, you know, granted, I think we're a little short on like, sort of a fast food type restaurant area here, you know, with something that personally, I think we could use more of, the little shops, the, you know, the gift shops and so on and so forth, they need these tourists to come up and down. Granted, it's overwhelming, granted, there's a lot of people here to pull, you know, to pull hordes of them out.
So if somebody's buying something while they're waiting to eat, that's a good thing?
Yeah, I mean, and Magazino deserves their fair share too, but there's gotta be some kind of a fair, a fair shake for the merchants on Main Street to keep them going.
Other question, and then I won't get into the weeds with you. I'm sorry, I'll put you on the spot a little. You know, as far as the trolley goes, and I followed it, and it seems more and more there's a concentration in going to another county, which is Duchess, which is to Dia, which is to their streets. And it's like, so this is taxpayer money, you know, no matter how you look at it, that's going through Putnam County into a trolley, that's taking people from here, you know, and bringing them, you know, to another county.
And I'd like to say.
Which takes a huge loop.
Hard questions are still good questions and I don't mind the weeds. And if I don't know, I'll say, "I don't know," and get back to you. What I've been told about that is that, yes, they do go over that line, but, well, you actually gave a great example. You watch them pick up folks at the Beacon Train Station and drive them right back to a village to eat. So I think, you know, yeah, anytime, anytime you watch a trolley go that way over the line, I hear you. But what seems to be doing is it's creating folks who are spending a larger, richer day and having more than one experience. Do we want them to spend all that money here? Of course we do, we agree with that. But if it's helping bring some folks from another, from outside of the county in.
I guess my question is if they're at the Beacon Train Station, why don't they take the train to Cold Spring?
You know, I think the answer to that probably is, they don't have the up jar, they, I don't know. You know, they got off at, I don't know, those are weedy, but I'm okay having that conversation with you.
Just as personal experience, it can be up to schedule and also if you're going to the Breakneck Ridge and then you wanna get to Beacon, there are very infrequent trains from Breakneck to Beacon, so that's sometimes a motivation for that connection.
Well, thanks.
Well, again, in the weeds, but the number of people at the trolley seats and the amount of money that it's costing, is it worth it going to Beacon and doing that whole loop and the amount of time it takes? Because I followed it and no one's gotten on it, so although I have to say, it could've been random.
I know ridership is up almost two hundred percent, but.
Like, that's a percentage that you could go with?
Especially, yes. Let me finish. Especially for the summer, the numbers weren't like that. They weren't like one, you know, there was, I think a thousand people rode the trolley this summer. I think that was what the number was.
Do they break that down on where they go?
I think so, and that's a bit, I will ask Vinnie, or we could have a different conversation with him, but they have been very carefully analyzing ridership so that they can see.
Right.
So it's not willy-nilly, they have been being careful about that. But you're, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate your input, thank you.
Speaking as a former Main Street merchant, I don't have my shop there anymore, however, and obviously I'm a little dress in there as well, I'm just gonna put this out there. Tourism is great, however, tourism is not great in the wintertime. And this place is still beautiful in the wintertime.
I agree.
So it's, it's a struggle, no matter how well-funded any of these businesses along Main Street are, winter is a real struggle. So if you wanna focus on that, you know, I just wanna put that button here.
I agree.
However, for Main Street merchants as well as the village itself, managing the impact on our infrastructure from this crush of tourism. For example, there are just not enough bathrooms here. And we can't just keep pouring money into repairing bathrooms and building more bathrooms because the expense of that falls on eight hundred households, okay? And that's where we need assistance from economic development, but also tourism. Just like you said, managing the impact on our infrastructure from the tourism that we like and have trouble with. So I just want you to be.
This is not a flip comment at all. So in the past week, we have discussed bathrooms in the village so many times that if we don't understand that there's a real, with everything else, right, it all comes down to certain things. And we've heard that loud and clear. I mean, I think that you would be happy to know that the chamber and all of you, every, you know, the ledge, it's been a loud message and it's not funny. Like, when it all, like, you know, I'm, but when it all comes down to something as basic as that, you're really, you're really, you're being very clear. Good.
Thank you very much for coming over.
Thank you very much, yes.
And look forward to working with you and.
So I should call them?
Be in touch with my people.
You know, I love coming over to Cosmo, we gotta get you guys to come over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Night of presentations.
We have to move the clock.
What's that?
Let's see how it, yeah, we have to. I mean, it's important to keep track of that.
How Breakneck looks different.
That's Meyer Peak in the view.
We can drop that clock off a little easily.
Yeah, I suppose it'll be a little less distracting.
Thank you, Ben.
Hello, everyone. My name is Roberto Muller and I work for the town of Phillips Town as its Climate Smart Communities Coordinator. And in July, we organized a presentation called Complete Streets for Phillips Town in the sense of including the two villages, all residents within the Phillips Town borders, as you can see on the map, and also Nelsonville and Cold Spring. From a woman named Emily Dozier, who works for the planning department in Duchess County, they adopted a complete streets policy a couple of years ago, and so she came and presented on her experience. Unfortunately, I screwed up and didn't research enough to make sure there weren't conflicts with all the village boards. And I think there was a Cold Spring Village Board meeting that night, so I apologize for that again. And wanted to do a follow-up, just abbreviated presentation. There is a lot of information. We were there for probably about two hours talking about all the different scopes within Phillips Town. And so take some information from Emily's presentation and just make it specific to Cold Spring, so it's concise to the town board. The context is, as part of its Climate Smart Communities program, the town of Phillips Town is in the process of preparing a complete streets policy. And what this means is essentially developing a plan that looks at how streets are used by everyone. So the focus is on vehicles, commercial transport, public transportation, but also the sides that often get neglected are bicyclists, pedestrians, youth, elderly, those with disabilities as well. And the idea is it creates a structure for all departments within a municipal government. So essentially, the simplest way to think of it is, anytime a project is looking to be approved or is up for discussion, there's a checklist that can guide some of the decisions. How does this affect this group? Is it financially viable? So on and so forth. And so the idea with respect to Climate Smart Communities is it also touches on emissions. Because unfortunately, vehicle emissions, at least in Phillips Town, are most likely by far the largest culprit. Buildings are fairly large, but we're doing a community greenhouse gas emissions inventory to measure total emissions within Phillips Town, including the two villages. And vehicles, unfortunately, are almost twice as much as anything else. So it highlights, to deal with the issue of climate change, we cannot ignore the many ways that we can approach reducing emissions from vehicles. And the idea behind this is it creates a whole kind of foundation to then look at some of these issues over a long period of time. Some of it can just be policy-focused, a lot of it informs implementation projects and so on and so forth. So that's basically the context of why Phillips Town is now looking at this. And there are lots of communities from around the Hudson Valley that have adopted a complete streets policy, one of which is Beacon. And I'll bring up just an example of resolution they adopted in a little bit. So first, I just wanna explain some of the context of where we live. So just looking at Complete Streets for Cold Spring, it's too bad they left from Putnam County, because we could show them the boundaries, but this is taken from the zoning district map. Local demographics, seventeen point six percent of Cold Spring's population is under eighteen, eighteen point seven percent over sixty-five. So combined, a pretty large percentage of our population is.
Where did you get them?
U.S. Census, American Fact Finder, twenty-seventeen.
And this is what the Village of Cold Spring, not one five, one six?
No, it's Village of Cold Spring.
And can you give me the source again?
American Fact Finder, it's the search engine for the United States Census. So if you type in Cold Spring Village into the search engine, it'll give you all the data and it's under Population Demographics. And then also seven percent are living with a disability. This is based on census data, so it's not, you know, a door-to-door survey, but it's a.
So, sorry, the seventeen, seventeen point six, the eighteen point seven are from the American Fact Finder?
Fact Finder, yeah.
And the seven percent is from the census?
As well, yeah. And they're all from the census, yeah, yeah. Yeah, American Fact Finder is just the, one of the studies within the U.S. Census. It's a more periodic, like census is only every ten years. In American Fact Finder, they do estimates for every year, every five years.
So it is estimated?
Well, even the census is estimated. It's all, they do a sample sizing.
Yes.
They never, you know, they don't touch every door, but based on the results they get from those samples, then they extrapolate it, just because it would be cost prohibitive to do a complete survey. And I think that kind of agrees with our community. We have lots of kids and then also a fairly substantial elderly community who, to some degree, you know, are able to get here and there without transportation, but.
Actually, I'm surprised, I'm surprised that the number under eighteen is seventeen percent.
You figured it would be higher.
No, I figured it'd be lower. There are two thousand residents in the village, so that says three hundred and forty people are under the age of eighteen. And it says that three hundred and sixty, three hundred and eighty people are over the age of sixty-five. I would, I would expect sixty-five over to be over eighteen point seven and seventeen point six to be lower than eighteen percent, just based upon the number of children in the village that attend, that you see around here and that attends, so I'm just surprised with that.
Population projections through twenty forty for Putnam County, we don't have a smaller scale. Projected sixty-four point five percent of Putnam County will be in that, kind of that same age range, under seventeen or over sixty-five by twenty forty. So just further highlighting the large percentage of folks who are potentially in the non-driving age range or needing more access to public transportation, you know, better access to schools, for example, so on and so forth. So it's just the context where complete streets sometimes factors in.
When do they, what's the threshold for people not driving?
It's just the, the odds are.
I know, where do they get that from? I would think that you probably seventy-five would be the odds now.
Right, yeah.
Or even eighty.
I don't know, this is from Duchess County, this is what they're basing their.
I know this aren't your percentages, but I'm just wondering where they actually, you know, if you're gonna have a complete, you know, if you're doing this whole, you know, developing this whole research, where that, I mean, it would, I think it would be important to know where that number is, because you're gonna be relying on those numbers. So if you're saying people over sixty-five are in more need of transportation, I don't know if that's necessarily true.
We're all over sixty-five. We all drive, his mother drives.
And she's ninety-three, you know? Nobody used to drive at a hundred.
I think that it used to, I think sixty-five was recent, I guess, maybe twenty-three, forty years ago. But now, sixty-five, current sixty-five is more like the old fifty-five that people as, as they've, sorry, what is this? As they've, as people have aged in our environment, they are more likely to be still driving past the age of sixty-five.
It's because it's on the province, but.
And I think, I think well into their eighties in the local, I mean, if you look around this small village, well into their eighties, seventies and eighties at least.
My next door neighbor's ninety-two, she still drives.
I mean, at that rate, I wouldn't be driving, Ray wouldn't be driving.
But across the street from me, the guy who's a hundred and one, he stopped driving three years ago. So I'm not, I'm just suggesting that sixty-five is not necessarily.
Cut off, yeah, so to speak. Yeah, this was based on Emily's presentation.
You have to put your number somewhere.
So the benefits are community resource access for non-drivers, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, pedestrians, cyclist safety, health improvements or exercise air quality improvements, local economic benefits, retail sales and real estate values go up, the closer that people are to bicycle-walking paths, public transportation, et cetera, just because of all of the benefits in terms of lifestyle that come with it. And of course, the sense of community is always heightened when people get out of their cars. So we took some pictures and there were various presentations. So for Phillips Town, we had pictures of, you know, the Phillips Town area, Nelsonville, et cetera, and for Cold Spring, just a couple of ideas that people had thrown out on, oh yeah, maybe this would be a spot for improvement potentially. But first, before getting to that, just describing the options that folks have. In Cold Spring, growing up here, I mean, there's tons of options going north and south, more challenging going east and west. But, you know, generally, we wanna go north and south for most commerce, access to New York City, so on and so forth. The challenge is, of course, social services, getting to eastern Putnam County. So the trolley, this is an example of the schedule at least based back in July. I know things are changing, it's in development. Office of Senior Resources, right now, there's medical transportation available, seven days, ten days advanced reservation to coordinate such. This is based on availability of volunteer drivers, so it's not promised, but at least some people are volunteering, which is a beautiful thing, but it's possibly something that could be improved upon, especially in terms of needing to get such advance notice. And then we, as I was saying before, just took some pictures of spots that folks have highlighted. I'll come back to this, but essentially, some people have been interested in trying to connect the Manitou School and Bosco Bell to the sidewalks, public transportation, pedestrian access out of Cold Spring. Fair Street has often been an issue with hikers, parking events, so on and so forth, so another So another section that, that folks have brought up is, well, maybe it'd be something to improve upon. Obviously, if it's cost-effective and doesn't negatively impact the, the residents on the street, so on and so forth. Morris Avenue, the tightness of some areas, and this overlaps with the state to some degree. But if you're a cyclist and, you know, you're trying to go by and someone opens their car door, like that car there, you have to be in the middle of the road. So just heightens concerns about safety in, in some of these situations. Main Street, next to Garden Street. Visibility in terms of not being able to see a pedestrian who's about two inches of the street, so if a car's in a rush and they're not paying attention. I think there is actually a green sign somewhere, but it's kind of hidden by the trees. So just an example of, or there isn't.
You can't see the pedestrian sign.
You can't see it, right.
If it's a car parked there.
Right, exactly. It highlights questions of visibility. Some of, we'll, we'll get to one of the solutions that came up in Duchess County's experience. But some communities have used heightened crosswalks as an added measure to emphasize priority pedestrians over cars in these specific situations.
What do you mean heightened?
There, it's actually a raised crosswalk. Yeah, like a combined speed bump crosswalk. Other applications like on Ninety, not such a good idea because, you know, it's a state transportation route in some sections. But in areas where isn't a through road, such as Main Street, it is oftentimes a better application for that. And then one thing that someone brought up is also disability access in terms of getting to businesses down by the rivers, so on and so forth. That we have the option, of course, you know, you go to the train station, take the elevator and go over. But one idea is, in the very long term, you know, it might be nice to somehow have some continuity. Who knows what that would look like? And of course, it would involve a lot of money. But one of the ideas that came up, just in terms of considering the access of all users in our community. So just listing some suggested projects in Phillips Town, just to give some context of other things that have come up. Connecting Manitou and Bosque Bell to Cold Spring, especially because the farmer's market is there at Bosque Bell. There's been a lot of talk in Garrison about trying to connect public services, such as the community center, recreation center, the library, school, post office, and Phillips Town Park. All obviously very complicated, but people are developing a vision to potentially transform that community so it doesn't have to be so automobile-dependent. Which in some ways would help with emissions and also just the community field. As I said before, some folks have suggested crosswalks, raised crosswalks on Main Street, and then maybe improving crosswalk visibility on Morris Avenue Chestnut, Chestnut Street, right? It's not Ivy, I forgot. Yeah, Chestnut Street. In terms of, it's really tricky because there are those bright signs and the crosswalk is illuminated, but so many cars just go blazing through anyway. So some communities have experimented with, and maybe you have experienced with this that you can reference, placing those markers in the center of the street itself and how that has worked out. Others have actually just added the raised crosswalks to force cars to slow down through that sector. That's complicated because it overlaps with the state because they want cars to keep moving through, but it's also at the cost of village life.
We have no say in that.
Right. But luckily, New York State is adopting a complete streets policy. So I guess some of the leverage potentially that comes out of adopting a policy for each municipality is saying, we are taking this seriously. We want you, as the Department of Transportation, to take this seriously. We know that the state has adopted a complete streets policy already and we feel like it aligns very clearly with our goals of increasing safety. Especially because some of those crosswalks are for students getting to school. And we have crossing guards, so on and so forth. So maybe that's a more financially reasonable solution. There's, they're just ideas in terms of, if it's cost-effective, then sure. And if it's prohibitive, then no, you move on to something that's realistic. And then other ideas were also connecting Phillips Town Plaza, also known as Kirk's Plaza, to surrounding housing clusters, possibly via some pedestrian corridors. And especially to Cold Spring and Nelsonville, possibly via public transportation. Same goes with Continental Village. Right now, people can get around by cars, so on and so forth, and it's great. But if we're taking the vehicle emissions from climate change seriously, sometime within the next thirty years, we have to very seriously look at these issues and solutions because it is the big problem for Phillips Town.
So if I think of what causes people to drive into Cold Spring, certainly the train station comes to a great, has a primary cause. What suggestions do you have to have to decrease the parking in Cold Spring?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Just make it harder. Those, I mean, some ideas are essentially, you know, if there's a group of people that live on like East Mountain Road, somehow developing, and this would involve the town too, a, like a park-and-ride lot that people could then get picked up and be dropped off down by the train station. This is obviously involved, but there are cities that do it, like Kingston has something, a park-and-ride. Continental Village could possibly have something like that. Although I, I sense that most people from Continental Village would end up going to Peak School Train Station instead because it's closer.
The, the other greenhouse gas emission vehicle in my mind for the village is the school. The school has...
Right, because people drive their kids.
Lots of people drive their kids, right, to school in the morning. And then they leave and then they come back and then they, so. Anything, I don't see many ideas for how that could be cut down. Like finding ways to have more kids take the bus rather than you having their parents drive. That would be really creative if something like that could be developed. And I have no good ideas.
Yeah, and it's tricky because I think a lot of kids that are in the bus pickup regions still get driven.
Oh, oh, God.
And it makes sense because you don't have to get up as early. And I totally get that for being a teenager. But yeah, at some point, it's these questions of, what are we willing to give up for the sake of, you know, the changes that we need to make? And that, those are the hard decisions that are so behavioral. And it's hard, it takes a lot of time to convince people that it's the right choice to make.
Change the game.
So at least the idea behind the policy is, it gives the municipalities frameworks just, all right, this project's coming up, we feel like it's really out of line with, we're trying to reduce emissions, we're trying to make our streets safer and friendly, so on and so forth. So it at least is just a tool to say, hey, we should slow down and consider this just a little bit more. Are there other options? Are there other communities that have done complete streets with simple problems? And how have they resolved them? So what's really great is, Complete Streets also has a national organization that are wonderful. They have so much research, tons of endless documents on case studies and so on and so forth. And they've created essentially a network to help municipalities connect and basically share videos to try to cut down on the costs of hiring consultants and so on. The process that they describe on the website for Complete Streets is, you assess the current situation, review also maintenance practices for highway, police, so on and so forth, plan a network, especially prioritizing improvements within that network. So saying, all right, maybe we're just gonna focus on Main Street to start. And then from there, we'll expand, you know, to other side streets, so on and so forth. Or if it's Phillips Town, we say, okay, well, we have kind of these cluster spots that we should focus on. And then maybe from that point on, we'll expand to other ideas. Reviewing approvals processes for building parking placement, access in terms of disability access management, sidewalks, curb ramps, which Cold Spring's way ahead of a lot of communities on this. Beautification, Cold Spring's way ahead. And the, all the benches on Main Street, like, doing fantastic. So in many ways, Cold Spring's actually doing a lot of the Complete Streets work, just, you know, doesn't have that umbrella titled for it. Bicycle access and parking, transit connections. Oh, that, that reminds me, I guess Eliza from the chamber told me when we were standing outside before the meeting that some folks have asked her about bicycle racks and if there's a way to possibly install them somewhere within our communities. So I guess it was something to highlight, which is kind of a, like, low-cost type of implementation project versus building a raised crosswalk, for example. So then through this process, reviewing, you know, the current practices, then based on that review, developing a complete streets resolution, which is pretty straightforward, there's just a template that's available. And then developing guidelines that actually basically create the structure and, and the process of how to go through it. And so what I'll do here is just pull up, for example, very quickly, this was the resolution that Beacon passed, adopting the complete streets guidelines. I'm not gonna read through it because it's kind of tedious, but...
Thank you.
Yes, of course. But essentially, the, the main principles are, okay, as we're reviewing projects, so on and so forth, how do we consider design for all users? What is the context sensitivity in terms of how it maintains local traditions? Ah, can't go too close with that. In residential business districts, you know, not negatively impacting one group in the community just for the sake of the other. Routinely addressing it by all departments, so making sure highway, building, planning, zoning, so on and so forth, are aware of it, understand. For example, I'm gonna bring up the next thing, just this checklist, being familiar with that. Consideration by boards and committees, and it's fairly redundant, but if it's, you know, different from departments. And then considering it in various projects and phases in terms of planning, funding, design, approval, and implementation for any construction, reconstruction, so on and so forth. And then they just emphasize essentially, any project, project should be consistent with existing plans. And there should be an emphasis on connectivity between streets and neighborhoods. And there should always be an ongoing process of evaluation to make sure that the plan is actually having its intended results. So just very quickly, this is what Duchess County uses. So any time a project comes up for discussion in, in a department or for a board, there are questions in terms of walking, bicycling, roadway, transit, existing conditions, looking at destinations, safety issues, planned facilities, green spaces as well. They go on to then reviewing the proposed design. Does it check off yes on a lot of these items in terms of bicycle, transit, access mobility, so on and so forth? So it's great because it's already created. The idea with Duchess County is they created this also so they could just pass it on to towns, cities, and villages to replicate their work without having to reinvent the wheel. And...
Could you send us a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah, so I will.
That'd be great.
So then the, the final thing was promoting what they call the five Es within the Complete Streets program, engineering, education, enforcement, encouragement. Also having celebratory events to raise awareness about it and the benefits, so on and so forth. And then evaluation, as I said before, to make sure that it's actually meeting its targets. So this came from our Climate Smart Task Force, but also the Phillips Town Community Congress, which had formed this a couple of years ago, elected this issue, especially in the form of having non-motorized transportation options within Phillips Town as the number-one issue that community members voted for. And specifically, people really wanted to see biking, walking trails within Phillips Town as a whole. But obviously, that would interface with Nelsonville and Cold Spring. So we felt, okay, well, you know, the forum that was going on really emphasized this, so it behooves us to make sure that we're working on it. Besides the fact that the vehicle emissions are such an issue, so we're trying to tackle that too. So it's a lot of information, but trying to give you at least what counted from Emily's presentation and then just our local context.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are you gonna send us the whole presentation?
Yeah, so I'll send you this and also the Beacon resolution and then also that checklist, just so you have it going forward. And then I'm gonna do a presentation to Nelsonville on the ninth of October. And that'll wrap up kind of the re-summarizing, summarizing these presentations, so. If you have any questions, feel free to bother me.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome. And we'll, we'll keep you informed as we move forward with Phillips Town working on it, you know, as we develop a resolution, so on and so forth, so we can pass it on.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll skip down to the B Street request, so we, you guys don't have to be... I like keeping you here for a while to get the feel of it.
Look at all you learned tonight, Charlie.
So, I don't believe, is there a page in the...
There's an email.
You guys wanted us to explain date, whenever?
Basically, we're inviting everyone under seventeen, over sixty-five. Nobody's driving there, everybody's riding a bike. Nobody wants to drive home from this. We just want to close B Street from Main to Mountain, but we could, if you want to shorten on the Mountain side, that's fine. We're inviting the entire, basically, seven blocks around. We've sent emails to everybody. Nobody has said no to this. We're just having an Oktoberfest because they're not doing it down in the village. Everybody, we're doing, we're doing, bring your own food. You know, everybody's bringing a plate, like, what do you call it?
Dish to share.
Dish or share, whatever. So everybody's bringing a plate and we're sharing and we're just getting the community together. Nobody from, some people from Nelsonville, but nobody from the east side of the county, nobody from Beacon. So it's just all local people getting together to have, you know, some fun. A lot of kids, I would say, between our own families, there's like nine or ten kids. That's the main reason. We have, you know, people use B Street as a turnaround, in all honesty, right? You come up, you guys all know where B Street is. You come up Main and people make a left onto Main, onto B and go around and fish till they go back down. They're like, oh, this is the end, and then they come back around. So we just want to close it off for a couple hours.
So Wes, do you know what the hours are, what you need?
You tell us, we're la, we're allotted. I mean, we ask, I think we ask from...
Twelve to six?
Twelve to six to two to eight. But we, if you really want to shorten it, that's fine by us to, we need.
Nobody ever uses the road anyway.
We just want to be able to block it.
Primarily daytime? Well, this time of year, it's really, it's dark now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so like, I don't know.
Into the evening?
Dusk, you know, seven.
You know, Saturday night, so, but, you know, it's, it's really about the kids. It's, it's really, it is in all seriousness, it comes up the hill. And people turn into that street, they go up, and honestly, they don't even go around, they just do a K-turn. It's very, it's a very dangerous street, all, in all honesty. We're just trying to get them to go around it, to, to not turn around there, to run somewhere else. Perfect, thank you.
Will you close both ends?
What's that?
Both ends?
From Mountain, Main?
Okay, great, thank you.
Perfect.
And that's Oktober fifth, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Everybody's, everyone's okay with it. They're all invited. One house is left out, but no, I'm joking.
Let it talk so much.
So we'll make a motion to, to allow the block party for, on B Street. Is it Saturday? Saturday, Oktober fifth, from noon to seven.
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's official.
Okay, next is a resolution nineteen, two thousand nineteen, authorizing Justice Court to apply for JCP grant. Didn't know you had to actually do this, but I'll make a motion to... Where are we? Okay, somebody else has to do it, I guess. Or not, no, no, no. Okay, so I'll make a motion to authorize Justice Court to apply for the JCP grant.
I second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Belova?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Okay, yeah. No, I would, I, I just need something to request the, the block.
Yeah, they'll, they'll refer to it in the fee as well.
Next is authorize mayor to sign MOA with C Street for two thousand nineteen season. I believe it's, the dates are all on here. We increased the fee because they added an extra date. So, somebody want to make that one?
So I need a motion to approve the MOA between the Village of Cold Spring and the C Street.
And to authorize me to sign?
And authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the MOA.
I'll second it.
Anything from, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marie. Next, we have correspondence, good. Hmm, there's a couple other. What's that? What's that?
The exhilarating system to everybody.
Next, the request from American Legion Auxiliary to use the Village Hall for meetings. Fran, you can explain a little.
American Legion Auxiliary basically has been meeting in the American Legion Hall, and since we don't have access to that any longer, except for, I believe, one Wednesday a month, with the same night that the American Legion and the BFW are all meeting, and the auxiliary can't meet on a Wednesday, so we've asked if we can use the Village Hall to meet here on the second Monday of each month. And sometimes if the court runs into a Monday conflict, then we'll change dates with them. It's just, we meet for about an hour on a Monday night at seven o'clock, and just, I've already asked pretty much everyone, no one seems to have a problem with this, I just wanted to run this by everyone one more time. Do we need a motion? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the American Legion Auxiliary to use the Village Office on Monday, on the second Monday of each month for a meeting until such time that they have access again to the American Legion Hall and Senior Street.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Next discussion, I proposed code change regarding escrow. Marie, you can take this.
Yes, so our council recommended that the village code currently is not as specific as it needs to be relative to the establishment of an escrow account, the reasons why an escrow account would be established, and the types of events that would require an escrow or would be candidates for an escrow account. So, for example, special use permit, subdivision, a certificate of appropriateness, a certificate of financial hardship, a, what would it be? A, a request for a variance. All of those are identified as events that could, that could trigger the need for an escrow account. An escrow account would be established when it was identified that a professional would be required, to be hired by the village to evaluate each of those events, whether it be an engineering firm, whether it be a preservationist firm, whether it be a, a, what do they call it, V and D?
Engineering.
Whether it be mechanical engineering or civil engineering firm. So those would be the uses, the consulting companies that would be hired, that would be paid from the escrow account. The recommendation is to establish a new chapter in the code, chapter fifty-seven, which is reimbursement of professional consultants' expenses. In addition, there would be changes made to chapter fifty, chapter forty, section five, chapter sixty-four, section thirteen, chapter one eleven, section five, chapter one eleven, section six, chapter one eleven, section twenty-six, sections one thirty-four, I'm sorry, chapters, chapter one thirty-four, sections sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-eight. So what I'm going to recommend is that the village propose this resolution at the next meeting. This will require a public hearing because it requires code changes to multiple chapters in the code. These changes are based on the current version of the village code, not on the version of the code that contains the Code Update Committee's changes. So if you go to the village website right now, you could take chapter one eleven and go to section five, and you would see the change, that's where the changes would exist. I've sent you all copies of the proposed changes to each of the chapters. Fifty-seven is contained in this, chapter forty, chapter sixty-four, sixty-four is HTRB, one eleven is subdivision, one thirty-four is zoning. So any questions on, on the resolution that we put forward next week?
You look at me.
We've been having, we've been having a conversation.
I got bogged down in the details, that's all it was. Since you outlined it, and I took another look at this, I, now I, I get it, okay? I didn't get it before, but now I get it.
I only looked at you because we've been having a conversation about what this applied to.
Right.
And what the amounts would be.
I was seeing trees, not forests.
Forests is what we're calling.
Marie?
Hi.
Couple of questions, probably lighter, probably because I'm not reading it well. You referred to village law, Article seven, is that New York State Village Law, Article seven, or?
Where is that, Fran?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the marked up.
It is not the.
It's not.
Village of Cold Springs Village Law. It is, I believe it is New York State Village Law, but I can check with John on that.
Okay, that was one. And then another one that was relatively simple, one fifty-seven-six, seemingly the fees and everything are collected by the village clerk, and I was wondering, should it be village clerk, treasurer, should it be accountant?
We had that discussion, and the, John's feeling is that it should go to the village clerk and not the, and not the accountant, and not the treasurer. So that's why it says village clerk.
Because he'll be managing the amounts.
Well, he, I mean, in this case.
The clerk will be managing them, so.
Yes.
In this case, the clerk is the treasurer, right?
Yes, but he felt, he felt that the village clerk was the better.
Are these the only areas where we collect escrow for anything?
There are, there are potentials to collect something like an escrow when it involves street openings. So highway department collects, it's not called an escrow fund, but it's very similar. Water and sewer does the same when there's the, the need for a street opening to evaluate water main break or whatever. They're not called escrow accounts, and typically, they're done by request or emergency. The person who has to have the street open probably doesn't have any water, or their sewer's backed up.
There's no type.
It's, it's not, it's not a voluntary thing to do, it's mandatory.
I see.
For highway, someone might request the installation of a driveway ramp, and there may be the need to deposit funds to cover the cost of that, but it's not called escrow. And I can't remember what it's called. But there is a list, okay.
Like a bond or something, would be a bond?
You're probably right. If you look at fifty-seven-four, dashboard, the escrows would apply whenever there's a land use application. And here, there is a list of situations that require a land use application. Sched subdivision, lot line change, boundary line adjustment, and you will see here, building, water, and street, sewer, building, water, street, sidewalk permit. This was put in to potentially address those situations going forth, but right now, that's not the way the code, the code is not requiring an escrow for them.
Okay. Should we finish?
Yeah, well, it wouldn't make sense because it takes too much time in an emergency situation.
It's typically, again, the water and sewer typically.
We had spoken before about pulling the fees out of the code.
Yep.
And having a second fee schedule. Well, is this opposed to that? Like, give the escrow.
We are going to be doing that in the Code Update Committee, this is pre-Code.
So we're doing all of this, and then we're going to pull it out and put it on to the future? Got you.
Have the, have the chairs weighed in on these, on the initial deposits?
The chairs have received, Aaron Wolf, Alzalinski, and Kathleen Corley, and that have all received copies of this document, including the fees. I have not gotten any, any feedback, any. And I've sent it to them twice.
I mean, fifteen hundred dollars doesn't go very far when you're talking attorneys or an engineer who's charging it two hundred dollars an hour.
Right, and, and.
I know when it deletes the five hundred, but then it's always, work keeps going on, people keep doing it, they don't replenish, so.
Well, do you feel that it needs a larger number?
Yeah, I thought it would, but I think they would be the people who know they've had the experience of going through a lot of kind of complicated applications lately, so.
I've seen it before where they have it as a minimum balance, and if you get below that, you.
Well, that's what it is here.
Right, so they got.
The thing is that that doesn't.
Gets away from you. Yeah, I see.
Anyway, if they don't, if they didn't comment, we can comment or ask them to comment before the public hearing also, right?
Yes, so, so my expectation is the resolution will be raised next week, the public hearing would be held the following week, and then it would be, once the public hearing is closed, it would be, it would be filed with them.
And that will public hearing within a week of announcing?
You may, you may be right on that, I'd have to look it up.
I seem to recall that this was ten days ago, it's, it's usually two weeks.
Okay, well, I'm fine with the draft of resolution. Okay, let's see. Next is discussion on post firehouse floor. As you know, or may not know, the floor has a, well, it's sagged in the middle because there's, of the way it's, the way it's built and the way the slab was, was laid without either the, either the earth under it has settled, I guess that would be the case, and now it's settled down some, and so there, you know, there's cracks and the floor's not even, so the, instead of breaking the whole floor up, which would be expensive, which we thought about, our engineers know this firm that does, they use polyethylene and they force it under, into the cavity, which then lifts the floor up to level, according to them.
Polyurethane.
Polyurethane, yeah. And so that would cost twenty thousand dollars to do that. If we had to break it all up, first of all, it'd be quite a bit of a mess, where this kind of alleviates that, you just have to drill a number of holes through it. So basically, it just forces it up, it'll fill it, and then force the center up to level, and then it won't sink anymore either.
Is there a guarantee on this?
I don't know.
You mean like it doesn't sink, then like a year or two?
While I was reading, they don't guarantee that it'll be level. They're going to try.
Right.
That's not a guarantee, but in terms of the.
But then you could float that.
Yeah, you can float it on top.
On top of, whereas now, it could keep sinking, so.
But they might not hit all the voids because they don't know. I mean, that's the only issue, but it looks really cool, but I hope.
I was originally, under the impression that that room at one time was part of the car repair, and there was a lift there, and there was a pit underneath it. I'm assuming the pit has been filled in, or had been filled in.
You can still see it from the, from where the, the burn, the oil burner is?
Yes.
You can look right in there, it goes right underneath.
So, so that brings up the question, are we, how confident are we in the amount of polyurethane that they are saying will raise this up?
Well, they put it in there until it's, until it comes out a hole.
Except that they give us a price.
According to eighteen hundred.
Yes, I know, and it's per, per whatever on top of it.
Bag of polyurethane, or however, square foot of polyurethane.
No, no, it could go up.
I mean, if you, if you can see the holes, pumping polyurethane into it, whatever you're looking through to see the hole, is that thing going to stop the polyurethane from seeping?
What they did was with the trough, they filled it with cement in the first place, and there was voids left behind, and that's why they collapsed, so. So it, there is a lot of cement in there, or the whole thing would still be wide open, but.
But, but you, so you said you could look in and.
On the end of it, you can see basically where there's a big U shape.
Right.
Where the pit used to come in and out.
Right, right.
And that's still there, but it's all full of rubble and cement, so.
So the question is, if you can look in, if they start injecting polyurethane, what's going to prevent that polyurethane from coming out?
Well, then a good question for them would be.
Whatever hole you're looking into.
That trough's four feet wide, and it's six feet deep, and it's thirty feet long. So if you get the volume of that, and then you can ask them how much, how much this stuff pumps, how much space it fills, so you'll know that if there was nothing in there, it would use forty cans of this stuff, or if it's mostly filled, you know what I mean?
Is this like great stuff?
It's a set area.
Is this like, you know, piles of great stuff? We're going to push the great stuff foam in it?
Exactly, but it's a lot stronger.
What's going to prevent it from coming out?
It is, it's going to fill all areas, that's what it does.
Yes, I got that.
On the end?
Yes.
Well, they'll put something over it, they'll block it from coming out.
Why don't we fill what you can see underneath with cement before we do this?
Yeah, because you can't get in there, it would be like, you know, shoveling cement down your basement stairs or something like that. It's just, it's not going to, it's not a uniform way of doing it, and there's, it's not going to swell and hold the pressure and things around it. If you just pack cement in there, it's just going to be there. This stuff actually fills the void and raises it up.
Before they put the polyurethane, so we don't worry about the thing.
No, they're going, they'll put something right over the end, I assume, otherwise, it's always going to come pumping out there, so you're not going to waste the stuff.
Let me, I will talk to, to Jason and ask him how they came up with the volume and how, and how we can be confident that it won't be substantially more.
Yeah, so you get that space in, it's that amount.
P and D, you seen this?
Yeah, they're the one that recommended it.
Okay.
And this company does big jobs, and they're going to be somewhere in, within the area, striking distance, so they won't have to charge for all the mobilization. Well, there is a mobilization, see, but.
Depending upon the pressure with which this stuff is pumped in there, another concern that I have, I'm sorry, is that it's going to blow out some of the walls.
Yeah.
I mean, those walls are not exactly the strongest.
Right, but the thing is, this is a profession, well.
There's nothing on the inside of the pit.
I think I would hope to professional service would.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully, they didn't go down to like the polyurethane.
There's no other basement down there, so basically, this is a trough going through solid cement. Like, if there was basement walls and stuff, it isn't, it's just that space.
Oh, okay.
I know that, I know they don't guarantee that it's going to be completely level, but are they guaranteeing that what they've done when they finished, will it last for ten years or twenty years or something? I mean, if you spend twenty thousand dollars.
Longer, it's, it's structural, it's meant to stand the test of time.
And we'd love to put that right in.
People put it in the, like, pool decks and things like that, that get undermined it, they actually raise those, they inject the stuff into the cement, the whole, the whole pool decks and parking lots and things like that, basement walls.
Does the fire company have to be out of there for how long?
I don't think it takes.
They're just going to drill holes and.
Pump it in.
Across the floor and pump it in.
Does it have to dry or something?
No, it's really, because like that spray foam stuff that you use to seal voids, like she's talking.
The great stuff.
Sets up.
They have guys, they have a lot of guys in their little.
Like a layer of salt.
I want to see.
First thing, it really.
Probably don't want to breathe that air, but it'd probably be cool to watch.
I'll ask about guarantee and how they came up with the volume and the numbers.
That was my next question, actually, is the smell from polyurethane, how they address that.
For.
For the firefighters. For the workers and also people adjacent.
It's only for when it's being poured or injected. Like, it doesn't last, the odor, the offgassing, as soon as it sets up, that's it.
I will ask them.
Just ask them how long that smell lingers, does.
If there is a, I have no idea, but I'll ask them.
It is polyurethane, too, it's not, it's not like the spray foam stuff. It's a little less, it's a different chemical, so.
Can we continue? So a couple, few things left. Prove a little batch.
Batch, I move to approve batch number fifty-two eighty-nine for a total amount of forty-four thousand dollars, forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
What's that?
Did you say that yet?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes nine-three-nineteen, trustee workshop. Make a motion to approve?
Uh, there's, unfortunately, the, the strike-throughs are still in the copy of the minutes, so, uh, they need to have a word accept on, on there.
Oh.
Is it, uh, under correspondent lines, under, it's, it's in a couple of different things. So, it, it, it looks like the, uh, so, it's, it, I suggest we accept the amended minutes, which, which does a word accept for all the changes.
Okay. Was there a second yet?
Yes, I'll second that.
You made that, you made the motion.
I made the motion, but I did not make a motion for an amended.
Okay, so I make a motion for amended.
Or should we just wait and amend it?
Whatever, whatever you have.
We'll just wait. We'll table and do it next week, then we can just approve the minutes as they supposedly. The world will not come to an end.
No.
No, not because of that, anyway.
No. Um, anything else from the board?
Yeah, um, I'm sorry. The, um, meeting was Tuesday on short-term rent. Um, I believe that three, four, or five letters have been received, uh, and I believe the board needs to at least respond to the letters.
Mm-hmm. I, um, I didn't, I don't know why they weren't on, weren't at least included on here. I mean, you talk, I mean, they're expensive letters, so I wasn't gonna read them totally, but, uh, I thought they would be on here, so I'll have them on the next meeting. There are definitely three letters from residents.
I didn't see them in the email. Are they?
I've got one, one in an email. The other ones, I think, just came in, I see, as either emails or hard copies.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
And we'll also come, we'll come up with a game plan. I, um, you know, was, we had the meeting. I thought the meeting, meeting went well. I think a lot was learned, um, and I think we, uh, so we'll move on. I'm still trying to figure out the next step, but, uh, we'll do, within probably the next meeting, we'll, we'll still come up with something for, for everyone to consider, um, be it an ad hoc committee or we work on something and then see how people react to it or something. Anyway, so I think that went well. I'd like to thank the board for all their work on the senior picnic and appreciation day. Thank you all. Went over well. We always have a great, great weather that day.
Yeah, we're sending.
Maybe we should have the parade that day.
Yeah.
Uh, I sent everyone just the list. It's gonna be in the ad in the paper if you can just take a fast look at it.
Okay.
The, uh, thank you letters were printed today and you're gonna get them out tomorrow.
Great.
Anything from the audience?
A couple of quick questions. Um, on the firehouse, Dave, was there, do you have a rough cost on the other way of fixing the problem, breaking up the floor and putting a new one, and how's that compared to the twenty thousand?
I think Steve has got a quick one, didn't you, for doing that a long time ago?
Yeah, a long time.
I know, it's just totally rough, but I think it was twenty thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Just to remove the floor, that part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause the, your, polyurethane is gonna be twenty thousand, right, the whole thing?
But nothing will have to be removed.
No.
The floor can all remain.
And then, um, just on the ERB and B thing, you've sort of partly addressed it, I guess, but a lot of the ideas that came out of your own discussion here and then at the meeting at the firehouse were different than what was being recommended by the code update committee. So, now, are you going to just kick it back to them, or are you guys gonna make recommendations to the code update committee or have a joint session? Any thoughts on that?
That's a great question. I, I think that we're gonna probably address it separately and, uh, depending on how the, you know, where we're at, where we are with the, uh, public hearing, um, let's plan for the code update and where we are with that. I mean, if there's a public hearing, we can present it then, or we can present it to C, C B four then?
Yes, so, if I may, uh, the code update committee is going to continue with their proposed changes with overnight accommodations at the code update committee meeting next Tuesday, next Wednesday, October second. The next step for the code update committee is to get, and that's a public meeting, not a public hearing. Um, the public meeting will be held open for thirty days, at which time the code update committee will make, after considering all of the feedback that it receives, it will make a recommendation to the village board for the entirety of the, the village code. The village board, in my opinion, the village board will then consider each of the elements of the, the village code that is being proposed. Then the village board will have a public hearing on the changes to the code.
So, the code update committee could still alter its recommendations based on your discussion as a board and the discussion at the firehouse?
Yes.
Okay.
And the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, your meeting is October second?
October second at seven o'clock at the firehouse on the uneven floor.
Uneven floor.
It's not gonna be polyurethane anyway.
There was no date, right?
What's that?
Date for the polyurethane.
No, I don't.
No, not yet.
Anything else? If you don't, we'll introduce, uh, Trevor, right, Trevor Knight?
Yeah, that's right.
He's a new resident. He was at our meeting. Interested in, in building politics, I guess.
I didn't, I didn't know that'd be the only one, but.
Please bring your friend.
Marion Avenue.
I'll, I'll talk it up, yeah.
Marion Avenue.
Yes, of what you came.
Yes, that's right. So, I'm on Marion Avenue, moved in August. Yeah, so I met some of you, uh, last week, but good to meet you.
How did you think of the meeting tonight?
Um, it was good. Uh, no, it was very interesting. I mean, it's very, uh, very inside baseball, you know, a lot of details and, and, um, procedure and stuff like that, but it's interesting to, to see him, like, that's why, that's why I wanted to come, yeah.
It's longer than most of our meetings. There's a lot of presentations tonight.
Yeah, I've, I'm curious. I follow, uh, questions later about, uh, the, the county relationship stuff, yeah.
We have questions about that.
Trevor, the Putnam, Putnam County Tourism Hall, um, sort of went, they abandoned.
The visitor center, yeah.
You can either read about it in the Putnam County News and Recorder or the Hot on Current. So, this was the new lady that's in charge.
She has an extensive background in tourism.
Maybe like.
Snark, snark.
Still a camera star.
If ever you are interested in any, uh, boards, I'm just, you can send me a, a resume, what you're, what you do or what, how it might link to whatever and.
Sure, sure.
Always interested.
You, you can sit in on any of the other board meetings too, if you just wanna get a feel for.
Uh, when, sorry, when are they?
You just stop in at the clerk's. You would have, well, you know, every time.
The village, the village website.
Okay.
Cold, Cold Spring Y dot gov, and it has a calendar there, so you can, I mean, all those meetings are open in public unless stated otherwise.
Okay, well, I'll see you guys then. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. Have a nice day.
Motion to, uh, chair.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm a San Luis.
Is that my?
All right. Now, the, it's a good job, the sound is good to check.